All right, we're gonna call this city council meeting to order at 6:19 on April the 13th, 2015. Can we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Ms. Papela?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, can we all rise for pledge of allegiance? We may have a moment of silence for at least one person?
Mr. Cleaves.
Right. So if we can remain standing after that, then Councilman Mays can announce it at that time.
And for Cliff Scott.
Councilman Davis, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
President of the Pledge of Allegiance, certified by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, I would ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence for Mr. Herb Cleaves and for Mr. Cliff Scott.
And, Mr. President?
Yes.
For Mrs. Waller, who owned a drugstore with her husband for years over on the pier.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is council and committee minutes. Do we have a motion for 150303?
motion approved, Mr. President.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Kincaid, supported by Councilman Nelson, to approve 150303. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would-
Councilman Mays?
I would move them with any necessary corrections.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Do we see any corrections, anybody?
I still, you know, until we say this matter is placed on fire, I still got my stand in objections, and so, motion carried, motion carried, motion carried. I see that just on the surface, I just saw my look at.
Any other questions? Can we have roll call?
Mr. Mays?
Yes, with necessary corrections.
Ms. Papela?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no, to accept the minutes.
Next item on our agenda is a special order. Emergency manager Ambrose has requested some time to come and address the city council. Mr. Ambrose?
I have to go.
Turn your microphone on.
You have to inform your mayoral council, they make a 13, another closing. I'm sorry, which is a recap and update on some activities that have occurred since I last addressed you mid-January, and some items of progress relative to transition. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you for your recent actions, which are committed to restoring and maintaining the city's financial solvency. The recent actions that you took shortly after the first of the year to adopt a series of ordinances requiring commitment to establishing appropriate financial reserves and an improved planning and budgetary process indicates to me that the council understands the need to restore and maintain Flint's financial solvency. While there's much yet to do, these certainly are positive steps in the right direction. The ongoing challenge will be to adhere to the requirements that the city council has adopted for themselves. I would also point out that there are many issues that face the city as it carries out the business of providing services on a daily basis. There are at least three priority issues that are occupying a lot of time. First is developing the long-range financial plan, beginning with the upcoming FY16 and '17 budget. Continuing to- second is continuing to address concerns with water safety, quality, and affordability. And the third is stabilizing resources for public safety. These are clearly top priority issues, and one which requires cooperation of all if they are to be successfully addressed. Unfortunately, resources are extremely limited, and we must make decisions which address the most critical issues in a financially responsible manner. Unfortunately, that often means we cannot do everything everybody wants. A couple of the key ingredients, in my judgment, to restoring Flint's financial solvency on a sustainable basis includes attaining a $7 million loan to finance the accumulated general fund deficit. And secondly, approving the consolidation for the 67th and 68th district courts. The terms and the conditions for the loan, in my judgment, equate to a good deal for the city, and will enable it to more quickly rebuild its financial solvency. I urge you to pass that tonight. Secondly, approving the consolidation of the district courts is projected to reduce city expenses by some $8.4 million over the next 10 years, and will help to provide some stability in funding other public safety services. I urge your positive consideration of that. Moving the city, looking forward, moving the city forward in today's environment requires professional managers clear responsibilities in modern practices. I am presenting to you tonight, as an attachment to this, an update of the city's purchasing ordinance, which was discussed at various committees over the last couple of months, and also an order officially defining the role of the new city administrator as the chief administrative officer for the city. These actions move in the direction of providing clear responsibilities, modern practices, and professional management, and hopefully move the city and the council towards becoming the governing body for the city, focused on policies and accountability for moving the city forward based on its adopted vision, mission, and goals. And finally, recognizing the increasing role of the mayor and the council as the city transitions to home rule with oversight by a receivership transition advisory board, I am reestablishing the salaries for the city council and the mayor at the levels that were in place before the city was most recently placed into state receivership. I note that council members particularly are much more active, now holding council meetings twice a month with committee meetings at least once a month, and the mayor is much more engaged in a chief executive role. Caution, that continued receipt of these reestablished salaries will be contingent upon the certain- upon the attainment of certain training levels, and there is a timeline of November 1st that is set for you to accomplish those. These training levels, which are familiar to all of you, were established in prior orders of an emergency manager, and as I said, will have until November 1 to obtain those. So there's my update, and keep up the good work, we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Ambrose, do you mind answering a couple questions?
If they're quick and to the point, we can probably get a couple of questions answered. Councilman Mays, what's your question?
Mr. Ambrose, I have some documents before me, and you- I listen to your words very carefully, and I haven't had a chance to look at these documents. They were just laid on the desk, and I seen them as I got here, and it's dated April 13th, and it says "update," it says April 13, 2014, maybe that's 2015, but it's "update and transition progress." And if, as I go through these documents, are you telling me that you will define the city administrator's role and responsibilities in order number three entitled "City Administrator"? Do you mind telling me what I'll find?
I believe I would just suggest that you read the order, and if there's a point in time where there are questions raised specifically to what is in that order, I'd be glad to address them at that time.
When will the order go into effect?
The order is effective now.
It's already in effect. Mr. Ambrose, and you then alluded to council salary conditioned upon us getting some training by November, I think, of this year? Now, you know, I kind of find that offensive because I'm a Michigan State graduate, but can you tell me specifically, or you're gonna answer that the same way, what type of specific training are you mandating? And if I don't choose to do it, or don't have time, then I would serve at the amount of money I get now? What is the specifics of that that you're referring to? Is that the 26 credits that I've heard talk about from the Michigan Municipal League?
That's essentially- that's correct. I have not changed the requirements that were in the previous emergency manager's orders, except to say that you have until November the 1st, 2015, to complete those requirements. And if you do not complete those requirements by that point in time, then your salary will be reduced to the level it is now.
And so, if you're saying that it's fixing the raise, and we'll receive it into November, but if we don't complete those, then in November it would reduce back down?
That's what I'm saying.
And so, our degrees and all of that means nothing. I'll look to see what that training is. And so, you say it was already in Mr. Early's order, and you kept it there?
The requirements, yes.
Okay. Mr. Ambrose, would you be willing to, once I can read and digest this stuff, come before us in the public again if I have any more questions?
As I said, once you've all had time to digest it, if you have questions, I'd be glad to address it at the appropriate committee's end.
And the final question, if I may, have you came up with any exit dates for yourself, or you still contemplating when that might be? I know at one point we were thinking April 9th, I heard April 18th. And don't get me wrong, Mr. Ambrose, I'm asking out of curiosity, do you know if that emergency manager exit will be in April? And the reason I ask, because once I review these orders, if you leave and I want them changed, who would I turn to?
There's no date set at this point in time. I believe I have said since the time I was appointed that we were shooting for transition sometime in April. That has not changed as of this point in time, but there is not a date.
And so, since we have one more meeting in April, Mr. Ambrose, I hope as I review these documents, that you'll grace us with your presence at our second meeting in April. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Mr. Ambrose, please, just one second. Can you please let it be known that this is not a raise, but a form of restoration?
No, you're exactly correct, that this is being restored.
Restored, okay.
The council and mayoral salaries are being restored to the level which existed prior to the appointment of an emergency manager in November 2011.
Thank you very much for that. So it's restored, not a raise, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Ambrose, real quick. This might not be a question, but if I have to ask it in the form of a question, I would hope that you would answer. Did you realize when you issued the press release that kind of alluded to the council as it related to 12 million annually for water from Detroit? That the concerned pastors and myself, and if you talk to Pastor Harris, we were articulating an emergency 30 to 60-day period, not an annual period. And I think that when I reached out to you to communicate that, because I've been meeting with the pastors, I didn't really appreciate that you assuming that we meant annual. We are for the record saying that we understand that the experts have given a six to eight-week period, we heard more specifically July, and we are articulating a possibility of exploring and communicating with the powers that be. You, the governor, you know you went up, they went up there, and the governor asked you to give information. And so, on behalf of myself, the pastors, the Defense Democracy League, and those who supported the resolution, we were articulating, yes, the resolution, it was a seven to one vote at a council. We are articulating, in my view, a 30 to 60-day short-term period if, in order to convince the customers that we paying high prices for good water rather than high prices for bad water. And finally, Mr. Ambrose, in your letter to the governor, you talked about reducing rates possibly 50 percent. When will you tell us what you meant by that?
I'm not gonna get into debate on this, I'm gonna say two things. Number one, the council speaks through its actions, and I obtained a copy of the motion that was passed by the city council, and it said nothing about a month, or two months, or anything else. There was a second point.
The 50 percent that you referred to?
The 50 percent. What I said in the letter to the state treasurer was that we all agree that the rates for the rate payers in the city of Flint are much too high to support the development of this city and to not create harm to numbers of people in this city. I did not say I had an answer. The reality is, it takes money to run the system. The reality is, the users of the system pay the burden of operating the system. So, we have, if we all agree that that's the challenge, then we talk about how we can do it. But we cannot talk about it one side, but not the other. You cannot talk about cutting rates without talking about cutting expenses. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, finally, I would say, that's what the motion said, do all things necessary, which included talking. So if you think talking helped, and I reach out to you and we talk, then we're in line with the motion. I agree 100 percent, we can't get there if we don't talk, because we do see some things. Congressman Kildey told me he trying to get the revolving loan money knocked down, and it's some interpretation going back now for 22 million. So the minute we get some of those reliefs, we've got 4 million in reliefs. I look forward, before you leave, doing just what you say, talking about it. But I wish that could have happened day before yesterday.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. We schedule a public hearing for today to provide the fullest opportunity for expressions of opinions for the pilot project for Salem Housing, for the Medawannany Hills Low Income Housing Tax Credit project ordinance. I believe Tracy Atkinson is here to make the presentation-
She'll be our first speaker.
-prior to the hearing.
Tracy?
Good evening, Council. This public hearing is for public comment to consider a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot for the Salem Housing Development Corporation for the Medawannany Hills Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Medawannany Hills is a 24-unit multifamily development located north of downtown Flint. The project is a- has a development cost of $5 million. It was completed in 1990s, I mean, 2007. The development generates approximately $140,000 annually in revenue, but its expenses are approximately $146,000, which includes $14,500 in tax payments. This ordinance consideration is for a 4% payment in lieu of taxes called a service fee payment of $3,580 annually. As Salem shifts its focus more towards civic engagement, the organization is seeking a local developer to manage this project. This pilot will allow the development to have cash flow and be more financially stable. Due to the economy across Michigan, pilots are now generally required with all multifamily developments to encourage the development of low and moderate income housing. Unfortunately, this project was completed prior to the change in program application, so this action would actually bring the program into alignment with similar developments across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any speakers here for this public hearing? Please come forward, state your name, you'll have five minutes per order, the emergency manager, to state your claim.
I'm sorry, what about the emergency-
Five minutes, you've got five minutes.
Yeah, right. Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni, I live in Flint, Michigan. I'm gonna speak in favor of this, knowing full well that our community, our city, is cash-strapped for money. And at the same time, I'd like to say that this Flint really need more housing. With the number of vacant homes in our city, I mean, what are we gonna do? Let me say Smith Village. Now, as that project was moving from owing, I believe it was, HUDD, a little bit over $1 million, my position at that time was, just cut your losses, pay the $1 million back, and be done with it. But no, there were certain individuals in the city that, there was a certain individual in the city who thought Smith Village was an excellent idea, who thought it would be the only, let me quote this, the only new subdivision being built in all of Genesee County during the year 2011. Well, how's Smith Village going? The homes have been broken into? I think some have even gone back to the county, to the land bank. So the question again is, do we really need more housing in Flint? You can say it's affordable housing, but believe me, there is affordable housing in Flint. The home next door to me, in Flint, Michigan here, it stood vacant for four years. The lady who owned it, she moved out of state, she let it go back to the bank, it was mortgage foreclosed. And guess what happened at that point? The bank did not even want the property. They let it go to the land bank. The thing sold for less than $7,000. I think that was affordable housing. So at a point that my neighbor was trying to sell the home before she moved out of Flint, she could not, because she was competing against the likes of Smith Village, where someone could buy a brand-new house with all-new appliances for the same amount she was asking for her house. This has been about five years ago, $40,000. Well, she couldn't sell her house, Smith Village didn't get sold. So, again, I'm not against the service charge, but I don't know that we're a community that can afford it, and at the same time, I don't know that we necessarily need more new housing in Flint. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for this public hearing? Can you give us your name off the record, and you have five minutes?
Dane Walling, 806 Kensington, City of Flint. And I'd just like to make two points on this. One, I'm in favor of this arrangement with Salem and setting that development to be successful with a future community development corporation or developer. I think we need to make some extra efforts in our community so that there is affordable and quality housing, and that's the difference. The prior speaker referenced affordable. We all know that much of the housing in this city is not particularly expensive, but we also know that many of the units that families are living in are not the quality that it should be. And that's why we're supporting rental inspections, so that families who rent houses can have a safe and secure environment. That is why I championed Smith Village, because I'm someone who believes that people who want to live in the city of Flint should have the ability to buy a new home, just like someone might be able to buy a new home somewhere else in Genesee County. I think we should support quality redevelopment in every part of this city, and we need to continue to use our master plan to look for those places where it makes sense. We may have to get creative, working together with our community development corporations, the private sector, maybe the hospitals, or the colleges, or universities, so that we can bring this affordable, quality housing into the city. I think that's where we're losing, more than anything else. It's not that there's not a house that somebody could buy or rent, that's not the question. The question is whether it's quality, and whether that quality is comparable with what a family might find somewhere else. And we all know that there are plenty of those opportunities in this city, and I hope that we continue to work together to find new ways that we can bring redevelopment and rehabilitation and new construction into the city of Flint. I think that's going to be what sustains us long-term. We may need to get creative on individual projects like this one, and I applaud those who came to the table to work this out in a way that we can continue to have safe places for families to live in this city. There will be a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes that will continue to bring revenues into the city, and I think that's a win-win for all of us. The same is true of Smith Village, where those homeowners are paying taxes. Most of those units have been sold, there are a few left if someone's interested. And I think we should look, as we go forward, with how we use our Community Development Block Grant for rehabilitation, and how we continue to support new construction and renovations with our development community, so that we have that affordable, quality housing all across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for this public hearing?
I'm Ariel Mitchell. And about this Salem Houses project in the middle of downtown Flint, it was going alright until now we need somebody to manage it, because this was the first, they had this program called, there's a whole lot of homeless peoples out there in the city of Flint, don't have no place to wash their clothes and take a bath. They invented some, somewhere to take a bath right there, but now it's under construction. And they ain't been able to take a bath in over a whole year, because they filibustering around. But just like the mayor say, like Smith Village, people wanting to get in their houses and leaving Flint, and then they competing with the peoples of, over for $44,000 and all that stuff, and you up there changing the law. I'm, hey, I'm with you with this, with this new government, whenever you, I'll let somebody else talk, I just wanted to put Mitchell in.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mitchell. Anybody else for this public hearing?
Mr. President?
Anybody else for this public hearing? Let me get to the public speakers, and then we'll come back to you. Anybody else will close this public hearing? Councilwoman Papela?
Yes, sir. I wanted to speak, piggyback on, forgive my voice, I have something, on what Mr. Mayor was talking about, affordable housing, beautiful homes, we need to look in our city for development. Well, I would suggest to the administration, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know these things, in the second ward, there is a piece of property that all over America they are developing, and the piece of property I'm talking about is Flint Park Lake. Flint Park Lake has been raked over, it's been, it's, everything's been done to it except development. So I'm suggesting that if we're trying to inch north, because when I look at doing the development at Medawannany Hills, the estates, or whatever you want to call it, I look at that as being part of the north side of Flint. So if we're gonna be the inchworm and inch north, I would suggest that we start marketing Flint Park Lake. And I would suggest that when we look for rehabilitation funds, there are still a lot of homeowners that live around that lake, and they need to rehab their homes that still look good. And then we could have a new development on the north side of Flint. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to visualize this, unless the city just doesn't want to visualize it. But I'm hoping that within the master plan, we look at it all the time. Why is Flint Park Lake, there's not a city in the United States of America sitting with an empty lake? sitting with an empty lake that's not developed, except the City of Flint? So I'm hoping that the administration will go forward and do some development on the far north side of Flint, which is called Flint Park Lake. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister President.
Councilman Mace?
Yeah, Mister President, is this public hearing that we just held, is it some action that's on the agenda for later on?
No, no.
Okay, so it's no action yet, we just held a public hearing?
Right.
But this public hearing, I'm watching close for something, Mister Mayor, you can nod your head, that's gonna allow them to reorganize the financing as it relates to something with Salem down the road. And so, thank you.
Yep, yep, this, uh, this will be before us at our next meeting, as a second reading and adoption at that time.
That's all I want to know.
All right, that is it for public hearings. Let's, uh, next on the agenda is petitions and communications from unofficial people and official people. Is there a motion to place those on file?
Mister President, I would move to, um, if I'm recognizing.
Place on file?
I would move to place, um, the petitions and communications and unofficial business, from city officials on file, either and or both.
So there's a motion, is there support? They're moved by Councilman Mace and supported by Councilman Kincaid, is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mister Nelson?
Yes.
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mister Winfrey?
Yes.
Miss Galloway?
Yes.
Mister Van, Miss Van Buren?
Yes.
Mister Kincaid?
Yes.
Mister Mace?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
The motion carries. We have no appointments, we have no licenses, we have no bonds, we have no damage claims. Uh, we do have a resolution which we have been giving a substitute for, um, and you all should have it on your desk, so this will be a one-five-zero-three-oh-two-point, uh, one.
Mister President?
If we can get somebody to make the motion.
That's what I'm asking for, the Florida Duke. I would move that, um, I would move Resolution one-five-zero-three-zero-two for approval. And that's dealing with the approval of the resolution, dealing with the, um, Local Financial Stability and Choice Act, um, as it relates to the seven million dollars from the Emergency Financial Assistant Loan Board.
Councilman, it's gonna be one-five-zero-three-oh-two-point-one.
So we making it a point one. Then I would so amend the motion to, um, call it Resolution Number one-five-zero-three-two-point-one, and we'll figure out why.
It's been moved by Councilman Mace, supported by Councilman Kincaid. Can we have discussion? And let's start it off from the city attorney, can you tell us what the, it's just, uh, like, three or four words, I believe, difference, correct?
Yes, it's on page A two.
Sorry, it's on page A two, uh, one, two, three, four, five, sixth paragraph, um, and remove the language that, "And the Department of Treasury will deny the request."
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Mister President, I didn't hear it.
Clarify what?
Page A two, sixth paragraph down, at the end of that paragraph, the former version included language that said, "And the Department of Treasury will deny the request." That language was removed.
It just says "and," and then goes to the next line.
Okay, so everybody's comfortable with that change? They know what it is?
What was taken out again?
The language "and the Department of Treasury will deny the request." So in your resolution that's in your packet, on page A two, on the sixth paragraph, the very last word on that says "and the Department of Treasury," do you see that?
So this is wrong.
Right.
We're putting a line through it.
Right, the one that we have here is gonna be a point, point one, and that changes or deletes that line. That's the only change. Yeah, that's the only change. Is there any other? Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mister President.
Mister Mace?
Yeah, you know, last budget year, um, when we looked at the deficit, I seen a way, in my opinion, throughout my short year, in three or four months, I seen a number of ways to decrease and/or get rid of the deficit. Some of them was talked about on record. I know when this came up, I think Ms. Poplar referred to it as the goose that laid the golden egg, and Ms., um, Galloway asked the question, "Why now?" I've always said that, you know, the council, the mayor, and elected officials ain't as dumb and ignorant as some think. But when emergency managers come in, they, um, do what, when, and how they wanna do it. Um, I understand the deficit elimination plan, where we would pay one-point-eight million over five years, had been accepted by the state, that's what I'm told. And so that mean, in five years, we would budget one-point-eight million. And I do understand that this is a loan if it goes through, which, when I listened to Mister Ambrose, he seemed to have a strong feeling that, from the communications that's been had, this is the terms and the amount that we'll go through. And so, nobody's saying, "Okay, go from seven million to fifteen or twenty million." I've got an understanding, these are the terms that we'll go through, and that we would pay somewhere between four, five, six-hundred thousand or so a year at three percent for the next fifteen years. But the deficit would be gone, and if I'm understanding right, then the accepted deficit elimination plan would be out of the way. You know, I'm gonna support it, but I'll say this to the council, to the emergency manager, to the state of Michigan, to the press, and everybody. It didn't take this long, and it didn't take a rocket scientist. I know in the past, you know, this municipal corporation and applied to the state, and asked for maybe, I hear, twenty million, but they might have been granted less than that eight million. So these ways of doing businesses are not new, it's just that we have not been included in the mix. When I read number thirty-two of this emergency manager order, um, that give the city administrator powers, as I predicted, number thirty-two says, "In the event the mayor or the council fails to perform any duty or take any required action after having been afforded a reasonable opportunity to do so, the city administrator may perform the duty or function of the mayor or the council upon approval of the board." So y'all might as well get ready, don't get excited. You know, when it comes to whether I make three-hundred-and-fifteen or two-hundred-and-fifteen every two weeks, I'll do this job for free, because I'm dedicated to it. I was born here, I grew up here, I'm trying to prove that we can fix stuff for residents of the City of Flint, that we done went away to universities, got our degrees, and we come back, understanding how to generate revenue, economic development, and do projects such as supermarket, factories, things of that nature, to get property and income tax going, industrial and others, in order to fix Flint. So I'm gonna support it. If you didn't support it, it's gonna happen anyway. But my point is this, it's not a goose that laid the golden egg. It's something that's been there, it could have been done last year, this year, whatever. We lost revenue sharing from the state. I'm gonna predict we'll have more help coming in. But at the same time, we'll be governed, and our democratic rights will be transferred from an emergency manager to a city administrator and a transition advisory board. And summing up, I'll say this, I pray on my knees that Judge Stee, S.T.E.E.H., in his prima facie findings, that these cities like Flint, Pontiac, Ben Harbor, Detroit, and others, where fifty-two percent of the African-American population, as I look at what's happening with the courts, the jury pool, I hope that shortly, he make a ruling, 'cause he found a prima facie finding that, under the equal, uh, equal protection clause, he sees something. It was cities all around the State of Michigan that had similar deficits that didn't get put through what we put through. So I say that to you guys, but don't get excited, because at this time, they come forward with something that could have been done before. And the minute that we do our due diligence, I don't think there's nothing wrong with paying off a loan early. I don't wanna owe the state, and I don't think, you know, I'm that excited about it, because I see resources where we could have paid it off without a loan, but I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I'm going to support this, and I believe that, um, I believe, Mister Ambrose, that you are the presenter of this document. I believe you are the presenter, but this document smells like Darnell Early. And I believe, in my opinion, and I'm just one, that this document has been in place because Mister Early toyed with us like we were children, and this is part of his little duckies that he's been setting in place. So I'm gonna support this, whatever I can do to help my city get out of debt. Maybe somewhere down the line, the constituents will receive something one day in this city. But I believe that you're the presenter, and I believe Darnell Early smells of this, because he could have done this, and he know he could have done it. This is not the first time. He's been in Lansing. So, Mister President, I'm supporting you, but I know it's something stinking in Denmark, and it show ain't the cheese.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else? Can we have a roll call on this, then?
Mister Nelson?
Yes.
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mister Davis here?
No.
Mister Winfrey?
Yes.
Miss Galloway?
Yes.
Miss Van Buren?
Yes.
Mister Kincaid?
Yes.
Mister Mace?
Yes.
Miss Poplar?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion carries. We do have one resolution that came out of Committee of the Whole, that is head-on number one, it's a public hearing regarding to the amendment of the Flint City Council Rules, proposal number two.
Mister President, I would move, um, add-on resolution to set a public hearing for, um, rules, um, number two, that will provide to us in Committee of the Whole.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Kincaid and supported by Councilwoman Van Buren. Is there any discussion?
Mister President?
Councilman Kincaid?
I would like to thank, um, Councilman Winfrey and Mace for taking the time to go through the council rules. Uh, we did this back in, uh, two thousand and ten, and, um, it was a long process for us. And, uh, I appreciate the work, um, that they've done. And one thing I like about this is that the rules will be reviewed every year in the summer, and I think that that's a good addition to our rules. And I just wanna thank both my colleagues for the work that they did in going through these rules and, um, proposing these changes. Thank you.
Mister President?
Councilman Mace?
Um, thank you, Mister Kincaid, but we also had in attendance, um, Mister Freeman, we had Miss Van Buren, and even, um, Mister Davis. And so, um, I appreciate when a colleague say thank you, and, you know, you guys had some rules in place that was easy for us, for us to work from, for, from previous years. So, you know, I would have loved to have been quiet, but I believe Mister Winfrey would have told that we had other help, so I appreciate it, but, um, I don't, I can't take all the credit to myself. But I do appreciate those who worked with us, and, um, I will say this, me and Mister Winfrey did spend a lot of time and most of the work, but it wasn't a loan. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, can we have roll call?
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mister Winfrey?
Yes.
Miss Galloway?
Yes.
Miss Van Buren?
Yes.
Mister Kincaid?
Yes.
Mister Mace?
Yes.
Miss Poplar?
Yes.
Mister Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
And Mister President?
Motion passes, Councilman Mace.
If I may, a quick caveat, I'd like to thank, um, Mister Chris Delmaroni and Mister Woodson for their input too, um, as we worked on those rules, they gave some public input. And, um, you know, hopefully I didn't overlook nobody as chairpersons, I talked to people on the side, and, um, so I think the council as a whole and the public, um, did a good job on these rules. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, no liquor licenses, no ordinance for first or second, eighty. Bring this to public speaking. You've got, uh, three minutes, let's try to say civil. Our clerk, Brown?
Yes, our first public speaker is Mister R.L. Mitchell. Mister Mitchell?
Mister Mitchell, can you give us your name and address, and, uh, you've got three minutes. Good evening.
My name is R.L. Mitchell, uh, my address is seven fifty-nine East Linden Street, on the north side of Flint. I'm up here to talk about the Robert Rules of Order, which y'all, which you peoples got Mister Mace, the councilman, under, over at the sixty-eight District Court, four judges, and that, I was, make it short, I was, uh, invited on jury duty last week by my god sister, she a big redbone, black woman, you know what redbone is? She took, she went, she, she tried her best to get out of it, but she found out she couldn't. And she wanted me to go at eight o'clock over there at the six, sixty-eight District Court. And when I got up there, I got up in there, then she up there talking about, I was in the place, but she said, "Could he, could he come in?" And then, then the woman said, "No, he can read some lot books, he'll go across the hall in the library," so I just, they are like, I went out in the hall and, and then from there, I went over, I left there, went somewhere and watched TV. And when I was watching TV, I saw, saw this woman from Detroit, mind me exactly what she mind me of. And no bad stuff on Chief Lot, but this woman done murdered her kids and put them in the refrigerator. She the same thing, she was, she said the exact stuff. When she saw me, told me where I was, I'd been in the courtroom all day long, but every time this woman speak, they push the button, they won't let her speak. The other father tried to take the other two sons, and the woman was talking straight, but this is what the City of Flint is about, this Robert Rules of Order, this, these peoples running Flint give us a, a time limit to take our government back, and, uh, peoples like, they talking about only take three council members to run the City of Flint, and, uh, and Mace, suspicion, all of y'all don't count. Everybody on that, only person count is you, Josh, and Scott Kincaid, and, and Mace. Like nobody can figure that out, and the rest of y'all ain't, what? I'm talk, my, my significant others are telling me, if, they don't know, don't tell them. I mean, without saying a word. And, see the attorney, and Peter May, get ready to get sued. And you know, you know, think Mace gonna be a pushover, or, or Councilman David smiling like it ain't nothing, ain't nothing concern him, and don't, if it don't fly, let it fly. And don't, if it don't fly, let it fly. Don't let it fly, fellow. That's all I'm gonna say to you.
Thank you for your time. Our next public speaker?
Our last public speaker is Mr. Chris Del Maroni. Mr. Del Maroni?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni. I live in Flint, Michigan. Um, council members, you might be familiar with a pie chart that was presented, um, in regards to the water and sewer fund, and how the monies is spent. And, and I, I disagree with that pie chart, in a sense of, it's supposed to show expenses, cash expenses. And in there is a section in that pie chart representing depreciation. And depreciation, from my understanding, is not a cash expense. Uh, that pie chart indicates five million dollars for depreciation. There is no account that five million dollars goes into. There's nobody that gets paid five million dollars depreciation. So I would ask that that be looked at, uh, because, in fact, I don't believe it to be a cash expense. Additionally, as we're stretching the payments out on the seven million dollars alone, I found it, well, the doors were locked, so maybe it came up in the committee meeting, but the public had no chance to speak on this. And, and you've passed it, but nowhere did I hear anyone ask, "How much is it gonna cost?" And I've always told council, follow the money, and look at the family tree. So how much is it gonna cost? And who's gonna be the underwriter of these bonds? Which, 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 uh, company out of Wall Street, and I'll say that. Uh, the two million dollars that was granted to Flint, Michigan, uh, some of it for water, over a million dollars was already allocated, uh, out of the general fund. Now it's gonna be replaced by this grant. I would hope that million dollars is refunded, or used to reduce the rates of water in Flint. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think the residents, for some reason, are being hoodwinked in this community. I FOIA'd a request, asking, you know, on the water bill, there's the four sections, you know, water service charge, sewer service charge, water usage, and sewer usage. And I wanted to know how much money goes into, I'll call them funds, each of those funds? How much money is allocated to each of those, based on what the people pay? I was told in that FOIA request, there is no such record. They don't know. Now, I, I just find that incredible to believe. I asked how much money was going to those funds and being expensed out on a monthly basis since two thousand and eleven? No such records. Don't have it. They didn't say that they lost it, or couldn't find it. It's not there. I don't believe that. I cannot believe that for one minute.
Your time has expired, Mr. Del Maroni.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, though, it's not a bond that we're getting, it's a loan from the state of Michigan. Um, we've got now council discussion. I'll start with Councilman Mays.
I wanted to-
Try to stick to five minutes, Councilmember.
I wanted to circle back, Mr. President, as it relates to the Rules Committee. We did a lot of talking and debating, but you couldn't actually pull that off without the clerk and the staff or the secretaries. So I would have to, and I would kind of be beside myself, and I wouldn't sleep good if I didn't thank, um, Ms. Davina Donahue and Ms. Inez Brown, as we went through that committee process. And so whenever I do that, um, I wish the clerk and the secretaries would give me a look, because we take that for granted too much. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Donahue and Ms. Brown.
Okay.
In saying that, I would say this. When we talked about the seven million dollar loan in the committee meeting, I said, "Every time we free up money..." And Ms. Del Maroni is right, my understanding is we'll free up annually about one point two million dollars or so a year. And, a million of it might be general fund money, and two hundred thousand might be from another account. And so I asked the emergency manager and all the powers that be, when we free up money, we freed up four million, two million on restructuring, revolving loan payments, two million, we got the due leak adjustments and incinerator. I talked to Congressman KOD, I wouldn't be surprised if now, between now and November, twenty-two million be freed up, as it relates to the revolving loan fund, because they fighting over the interpretation of whether or not it can be forgiven. And so all of this, I call it politically timed. And when that money drop, like it's been dropping and continue to be freed up, particularly in an election year, I don't bite my tongue. Because some of the powers that be like for money to drop, in order to make others look good. In this case, people like to keep people in office if they feel comfortable. And in this case, if I feel that I choose to run a political campaign to try to do a better job in the area of lower water rates, public safety, economic development, I don't like golden gooses, as they've been called, that lays golden eggs in the middle of the months of April, August, and November. It's purposely, it's timed, and it's appalling. I want people to live a certain quality of life. If you can do it yesterday or tomorrow, do it. Quit playing games with the dropping in of the city of Flint of money. And so that's how I'm gonna talk about it, and that's how I've talked about it, that's how I've predicted. Now I'm seeing the reality. When you read the emergency manager order that give what I said would happen months ago, the city administrator, different powers than a city administrator in our charter, you'll see stuff like what I talked about, subpoena power. Power to do what the council and the mayor can do. In other words, many emergency manager powers. That's what it amounts to. I told y'all for months, I'd say, "Don't y'all see it coming?" I don't get excited about transitioning out. You can't buy me with restoring a salary, because I keep telling you, "I'll do this job for free." I'm not finna be quiet, because somebody wanna restore a salary to shut me up. I'm gonna talk like I've been talking when they put the emergency manager order on me. You didn't see my emergency manager order disappear? If I keep talking, they'll put another one on me. I'm so close to asking this council and Mr. Bay to give us outside legal counsel. Because I don't believe that the emergency manager Ambrose and others was appointed properly. Under Public Act four thirty-six, everybody been focused legally on the eighteen-month clause. I'm focused on the appointment. Under four thirty-six, it's a procedure for appointment. So I don't care if you tell me the public library, um, lawsuit out of Detroit lost, they focused on the back end, I'm focusing on the front end of the appointment under four thirty-six that ain't been done properly, and I'll focus on the back end, the eighteen-month clause. And if they stay here long enough, I'll file the papers and litigate it myself. Finally, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we disapprove the District Court consolidation plan. And when we disapprove it, if I can get some support and get into discussion-
Let's get that on the floor, then.
So I'm gonna move, because I wanna talk about that jury pool and see if my colleagues voted up and down. So I'm putting the motion within that ten-day period.
We've got a motion on the floor to disapprove the proposed District Court consolidation. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We had, we found out in committee meeting, Mr. Davis, that the clock started running. Um, Ms. Popla-
And before, and before you go, let's try to limit our debate to three minutes per person, and then as soon as everybody gets their questions out, then we'll kind of come back around.
And so, remember the rules. I appreciate the support immensely, um, Mr. Winfrey, and I heard you, Mr. Davis, because under discussion, I really wanna be serious about this. I want to try to see if we can interject the jury pool in, which shouldn't be a substantial financial change. Ward Chapman say he gonna research it. And then, as they talk about the unions, and from what I read, I thought that was complete, and we heard that it wasn't. And so as we get more information on that, we'll have seven days to get the information. If nothing we do, but it change the jury pool aspect of it, which shouldn't affect it financially, I'll be willing to do that and see for once would a state, you know, do our work. So if this motion pass, Mr. President, I wouldn't mind sharing a subcommittee on that work. Thank you for your support, Mr. Winfrey, and I look forward to see if my colleagues will do this for the citizens of the city of Flint, at least discuss it and move forward.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Councilman Davis?
My discussion in dealing with the merger of the sixty-seven District Court and the sixty-eight District Court, I have some concerns in regards to that. And one of my concerns is, is the people that works in the sixty-eight District Court. Them merging puts people back in line to apply for the same position that they're already working for. And some of them, if not most of them, live in Flint. And I have a problem with that, because they will have to go and reapply and be considered after looking through other applicant, applicants. And I just, I'm just not comfortable with that. And I'm also not comfortable with the county taking over our system. Everything is starting to seem like it's, everything is going to the county. And that's just something I'm just not comfortable with. But, most importantly, I'm not comfortable with people losing their jobs. And, and some of those people have seniority. And for them to have to reapply, I think that is so unfair and unjust. That's where I stand at, if I'm correct. And my feeling is, if I'm correcting what I'm saying, maybe I'm not. But I hope that I am correct, on how that was brought to my attention. Um, so, that's it.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, Mayor, as we undertake this vote and try to put together five, keep this in mind, council colleagues. If you had have been in committee meeting and heard what we heard as far as the discussion of the jury pool, all we would do is make a counterproposal that would keep the jury pool in the fifth district, and it might very well get accepted, because Ward Chapman was there for the first time since I kind of been around, and that used to be the county attorney. So, that's a serious, non-economic request. And then we found out that they still negotiating some aspects of the employees. So for those who wasn't there, I'm looking to see how this vote will go. But for those who was there, and might have had a preformed opinion from, and I know I talked about what I read, Mr. Kincaid, what you and Mr. Freeman said, but look at it like this, if I may, Mr. Kincaid. What if we take the seven days and can't come up with nothing? What do we lose? What if we take the seven days and only put in the jury pool by a vote of five and send both of them, and we actually get it? So I don't want us to look like we're not going in favor or something, but I want us to put our best foot forward for our court system. And I'm really asking for support of five, and if so, let's see what we do. Thank you.
Councilman Kincaid?
So the motion is to disagree?
Mr. President, I, I understand, and I completely, um, do understand the issue. The problem is, is I went through this with the firefighters contract, and we have to present it to the loan board, and it's actually a waste of our time. It was a waste of my time, it was a waste of the firefighters' time. When we went before the loan board, they had their minds made up before we ever got there on what they were gonna do. So, by voting down this agreement, which I personally support consolidating the courts, um, it was something that I felt that we would have done this a long time ago. It would have saved us a lot of money. Um, I completely concur with the opportunity from the unions to sit down to be able to negotiate some sort of amenable transition plan, which, there were a lot of changes that were done here. Then, none of the employees had that opportunity. When they cut in the waste collection, um, it was left up to Republic to offer the employees a job, and all of them got offered a job, which I'm very grateful for, and most of them accepted it. I'm gonna support this plan, because whatever was presented to us today, regardless of what we do here tonight, or what we do in seven days, or ten days, will be what was presented to us. And, you know, it's just time to accept the fact that it is what it is, and we just need to move forward. So, that's my two cents, and I'm going to, um, vote no on your motion, Councilman Mays. It's not that I disagree with what you're trying to get, but it's a waste of time and effort. So, um, that's my reason. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Winfrey?
Uh, Councilman Kincaid, I, I understand you, I respect your position. But when you look at it, or when I look at the meaning of a jury of its peers, that means something to me. And I'm telling you, when you talk about people from the inner city, and it's a real thing, and what a jury of their peers will look like, the fact of the matter, in my mind, is not a group of people, and I have nothing against any ethnicity. But when you talk about inner-city folk, whether they be from the east side or the north side, and you talk about a jury of their peers, in my mind, it is not someone who lives in Goodrich, or who lives out in the fringes. So for that reason, I am going to support, uh, Mr. Mays's motion.
Anybody other than those that have spoke already, and then I can come back-
Mr. President?
Councilman Nelson?
You know, I have sit here and I've listened to both sides. Um, I guess my greatest concern was, were the residents of Flint, were they gonna be able to vote for our own judges? And that's happening. I understand the situation with the jury pool. If we were talking about the circuit court, I would have a greater concern. Not that I don't have a concern now, but what they laid on the table before us, the four cases, and I understand what Councilman Mays said, he made a good point, because he's been through that. But if our voters are voting for our judges, and there is a system in place to reapply for, um, the jobs, I guess I have a question, and maybe Peter can help me, if that's alright, Mr. President. Peter, the, the reapplying for positions, is it a application process? Are they looked, are they to take a test, or are they giving a opportunity for this job? And if they don't want the job, then, too bad? Could you enlighten me just a little bit there?
Unfortunately, I really can't. I mean, I don't know, uh, I don't have information about what the county's hiring process would be. It would be an application for the positions, and I assume that there would be some testing, but beyond that, I can't really speak to it. I don't want to give you bad information, I don't know.
Mr. President, this is directed to you then. If we do this motion, and this passes, and in seven days, we don't have anything else in place, or if we do, and we go before the loan review board, then they have how many days to get back with us?
I don't know what it is by statute, I think they have thirty days to review it. Is that right?
That's correct.
Or, or they can vote immediately there, I believe, too, so. I'm not sure how they did it.
They voted immediately?
Yeah, they voted immediately with the firefighters' contractor, they have thirty days. Up to thirty days.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
I have something to add.
Can I get Councilwoman Galloway, and then Councilman Mays?
I appreciate the, the dialogue that we've been having. I know that ultimately, they'll, they'll make the, the decision that they deem is best for all involved. When we were told that we have the ten days, and then we have the seven days, it said that as long as we could come up with something that was financially comparable. And I understand and appreciate Mr. Ward bringing in that there had only been four cases. I guess what I don't understand is not feeling like adding a little bit more is a problem. I don't think making the effort, and, and again, I think it's easy, though, if you've never been in the court system, and you've never had to deal with the anxiety that I can imagine that it feels to, to look at, you know, juries and, and hope that, and I don't know what your situation is, maybe you're innocent, maybe you're not, maybe need somebody to just look with open eyes. But I just, I, I just would think that, to me, that's not a waste of time. It's, it's, it's not a waste of time to say, hey, and, and I understand, there's a, a process that your attorney can go through all the appeal processes and all of those things, but a lot of people can't afford that. And so, you just want to, to do the safeguards, if you can, that could make the transition feel a little bit more comfortable for all, all those involved. You don't just want your judges to be protected. You want the changes to impact all that are going to be impacted in the best way possible. And so, I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I guess finally, I don't know, Mr. President, but I would say this to Mr. Kincaid's logic. I would say it to what I heard Mr. Nelson inquire about. Mr. Nelson and Mr. Kincaid, under four thirty-six, we have the opportunity of within ten days, and then within seven days. Just like we did the rulemaking committee, some of us don't mind doing the work. Some of us don't mind being polite and putting the wording in there. And so, what I'm saying to you is for those who might not want to meet with the city attorney and do the work, we will do it. We'll put the wording in there that doesn't create a substantially economic change. By then, Mr. Nelson, you might get some questions answered that they haven't answered, because we just got this Friday. And I don't think the loan board or the people who going to transition out and supposedly give us power will look at us bad. They didn't look at us bad when they accepted the firefighters' contract, but we put our best foot forward. So I don't think we get punished for doing what state law tells us to do. It look like I'm counting four votes. I'm hoping that we get a fifth vote. And I don't think we get punished. We either get a rejection or an acceptance based upon the quality of our work and the rules we play. So I don't want people to look at it as, as something bad. It's just an opportunity we get on behalf of the people of the city of Flint. Thank you.
I have Councilwoman Van Buren, then Councilman Kincaid.
Yes, what I want to say is, it is not easy whenever we have to look at these changes. We are so used to having certain things available to us. But our future will depend, if we keep those, can we still survive some of the other changes we will have to make? Public safety is one of those ones that will always be at the front. They're the biggest department or area that takes a lot of financial responsibility. And I don't know what cuts we can make regarding other areas. This is a change that it will still continue to exist, but it's where it'd be in the hands of the county. We'll still have our judges, we still will be able to elect them. There's still an opportunity for the employees to move into new positions with the county or receive a severance pay, or be laid off for a certain period of time, but still receive six months of benefits. So there's, they're not going to be, you know, they are not just going to be put out in the street. There are still things happening to make this as, as smooth with bumps, but it's going to have to work with us, because we can be stubborn and make changes or whatever. Well, one, it's going to happen, period. There's going to have to be something. Either it's through something we do, or it's because this is what the city's going to make happen. But you also have to look at that over the next ten years, it's going to save us eight point four million dollars that could really help in the area of public safety. If not, where else can those changes happen? We have to be ready for change. We can't just stand still. Some of the things you mentioned, I don't even know if it could really be in this situation, like the jury pool. They mentioned something about there's some type of statute that may, that that may be affected. And that may have to be something at a state level, I don't know. But it'd be interesting to see how that all works out, because I think we have the right to, like you say, to be judged by our peers, and we should have, you know, a sufficient, a proper type of pool of citizens that will be called on to serve as jurors. But in the meantime, we're talking about money and expenses in a way that we can survive and still move forward. So, again, change is not easy. But if there's some better ideas, fine, but where are they? What are they? That's my thoughts.
I've got Councilman Kincaid, then I've got Councilman Davis, and I'm assuming you want to talk again?
I just have a question to you, Mr. President. Who will make the presentation to the loan board? I think this body needs to know.
I think that's something we'll have to decide if we come up with an alternative. I think that's something we'll have to decide if we come up with an alternative as a group, who will make that presentation.
Mr. Winfrey?
That alternative will have to be voted on by us as a body, as well, so.
Mr. Nelson?
Depending on how things roll over the next night here, what the decision is, and then we'll make that decision moving forward. I've got Councilman Davis?
Yeah, well, I just want to reiterate. We have a public safety millage that still is in effect into twenty seventeen. Now, I don't know what we're going to do after that. But my only concern at this point in juncture in time is the people who works in that department, who's been there for many years, having to, having to reapply for a position that they may not even get, because the people in the county, they're going to take precedence. They get laid off, they only going to get unemployment for twenty weeks. And after that, that's done. They may get benefits or whatever, whatever they may get, but it's not going to be long. And they put back out and looking for another job. Those are residents that's paying income taxes and property taxes. Now, what's going to happen if they live in Flint, they're going to leave and take their families away with them. That's just my only concern. The intricate parts of everything else, I haven't really got into it real deep like I should have, but I haven't. But when I heard that part, it just, kind of just blocked me out a little bit. Because they're going to take their families, they're going to leave, we're going to lose all the income and property taxes, and then they're going to be put in twenty weeks. That's it, for them. That's just the only part I don't like about it.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Poplar, I don't think you've spoken yet. And then Councilman-
I don't want Ms. Mays.
Why, I don't, have you spoken on the issue yet?
No.
Okay, then you go ahead, and I'm trying to get everybody that hasn't spoken.
I agree with Mr. Davis when it comes to jobs. But it's just a fact of life. If you've lived any time, you know that companies come and go. What, we lost eighty thousand jobs with General Motors. We have a nine-one-one system where those people got to reapply for their jobs. And I don't believe I heard anybody screaming about that. So it's just a fact of life. I don't want anyone to be without a job. But we need to trim this court system, and if it can save us this money, where maybe somewhere along the line, we can pave the streets, because they falling in. So, whatever money that we can save to help our city, because our city is a pitiful, pitiful situation. Streets falling in, sidewalks not done, nobody has a plan. So hopefully, if this passes, this will save us some money. And maybe the powers that be, and which seems to be the administration these days and the emergency manager, can find a way to use some money that we may be saving, so that they don't fall in a hole in the street, and certainly not me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, Mr. President-
Councilman Mays?
I don't think none of us, well, I can't speak for everybody, but I, I, I'm kind of listening to what Mr. Winfrey, Ms. Galloway, myself, I don't think none of us are saying, Ms. Van Buren and Ms. Poplar, that we're not going to save money, eight million over ten or eleven years. Because if we propose something substantially financially different, it don't even fit the law. What we're advocating is proposing something within the law that's not offensive to hopefully the powers that be, because it's the law. When I heard Mr. Kincaid say, who would present it to the loan board, I wouldn't care if it was him, if it was Mr. Winfrey, Ms. Galloway, Ms. Nelson, Ms. Poplar, whoever, the president himself. My thing is that we do quality work, conform within the law. And for one, if the jury pool was something we could put in there, because they said it was four cases. I had one of them. I'm glad to have a jury of Flint people versus a jury of people from outside the county who understand our culture need. But if you understand district court, and district court is so much willing and dealing, nobody understands they have a right to a jury trial. If they come back and the people in district court start demanding jury trials, they might show enough be needing more than four or five judges. So the culture of sixty-eight district court is to negotiate, will and deal. You run into a guy like me that wants his full rights and asks for a jury, you got chaos. So hopefully, but if you do exercise that, you should have a jury of your peers. I would say as the maker of the motion, if we move through this process, and I'm not falling deaf ears on what you said, Mr. Davis and/or Ms. Poplar, because they said they going to give us more information over these next seven days as it relates to employees. But my vow is this, we're not trying to propose nothing to make us look foolish. We're not trying to propose nothing to say we're not going to have all the same economic gains. Because when the county board voted with Mr. Nolan and Ms. Clack, it's a done deal. All we're saying is let's see if we can get something in there that don't really cost us a dime. And if you heard what Ward Chapman say, let's take this opportunity. And I'm smart enough to say, if we can't put something together in seven days, it ain't a penalty if we don't. But if we do, and let's say it get accepted, Lord have mercy, that's a blessing.
Your, your time has expired, Mr. Mays.
No, I'm just saying he, saying he don't research it.
All right.
I just wanted to add, I, I just, I was, I was just told that currently there's a system in place that allows the courts the ability to separate the citizens of the, of Flint and how they do the jury pool, and so that it wouldn't be something that would cost, it wouldn't be something that would have to be done different. And so, again, I just want to make sure that as we go forth, it just sounds like there's a lot of communication about the cost. We recognize that the cost savings are a done deal. That whether we act or not, the proposal as it stands, worst-case scenario, goes through the way that it is. And I'm, I don't mean worst-case scenario as if this isn't a, a good proposal. It's going to save the city of Flint a lot of money, we do need to move forward. But I would hope that in doing this, that added protection for the citizens that we say that we represent wouldn't be, I mean, we're talking about a line or two. We're not talking about wasted time, we're not talking about three hours in a meeting, because we're not trying to dissect this and see, can we save two million dollars instead of that, the eight million that they're saving? We're simply saying we'd like an amendment to say that those that are in the city of Flint can still have the jury pool chosen the way that it is chosen today. And as long as it doesn't, I would think that it doesn't break any laws, otherwise it wouldn't be in place today. I, I, I don't, for me, my conscience would be good with that, and I'm going to support the, the motion that was set today. Thank you.
Everybody else is done? Councilman-
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say this, and I'm, I'm hearing my colleagues, and it will be what it will be. But it, I, I don't want this to get mixed up, that I heard Councilman Mays say, you don't have to do no work, let them, the few that wants to do the work, do the work. I don't mind doing the work. I'm here to represent my ward, and I think I, I represent it quite well. But when you hear the voice, and this voice is that, I don't want to seem that a select a few is willing to do the job. I'm willing to do the job. Here it is, at the end of the day, when the, when the sun has begun to set, what will the results be? Because I'm agreeing, don't think I'm not. But what I'm saying is, in this one or two lines that we're going to do, are, are, are we going to deal with the jury pool? Or are we going to deal with make and shield workers retain their jobs? So are, are we including both, or are we doing one? Because Councilman Davis concerned, it's not so much the jury pool, it's the job security. So, are, are, are we working on those two items to change? Or we just strictly dealing with the jury pool? I guess that would be my question.
Good question, Senator.
Mr. President?
And I don't have that answer, Councilman Mays.
That's the million-dollar question. Mr. Nelson, that's the million-dollar question. But when you talk about saving millions of dollars, the law say that if it's not substantially the same, it's not going to be successful. So, you know, we are talking jury pool, but in that disapproval process, because it was said in committee meeting that we don't know all the answers. So as we get more answers over the seven days, I don't know what we'll find out as it relates to Mr. Davis concerned, but we would be able to find out. And then, at the end of the fifth or sixth or seventh day, Mr. Davis is smart enough, just like we are, to know whether or not, if we can't get there financially, we might not be, better put it in. we might not be, better put it in. But I agree that we should look along the way. If we dealt with the jury pool, we would be having seven days to find out more about what Mr. Davis is talking about. But that would be a different juggling act in the jury pool. And I hope that if we didn't find out what he wanted us to, he would acquiesce and say, hey, and we would as a group of five just put the jury pool. Y'all would just put the jury pool.
Hang on, hang on a minute, hang on, hang on. I got Councilman Nelson to finish.
Thank you.
Then I had Council, what?
Galloway.
Galloway. And then I've got Councilman Davis, and I got Councilwoman Van Buren. Anybody else? And then Councilman Mays.
Uh, I'll be calling for the question.
Councilman Nelson.
I, thi, this is.
And I wanna say something before the end.
Because he, here's what I'm saying. If I had to choose between the one or the two, it's the job security. You, you see what I'm saying? Because if these people live in Flint, and they're taxpayers, and he made a statement, if they lose their job, then they're leaving the city. You, you see what I'm saying? So if I, and, and all due respect to the jury pool, but what if five or six families so happen to live in the third ward? You see what I'm saying? Then, then it's so much, they're not looking, and they're concerned, it's not gonna be the jury pool. It's gonna be job security. So, I mean, if we got seven days and we ready to roll up our sleeves and go look at this? Because here's my thing. I watched the firefighters contract. And I watched how much dedication and hard work all of you put into that. 'Cause at that time, I was sitting out there. And when it came to the vote to take it to the long review board, you had some council peoples to say no. So, I'm saying you did the work, but then when you got ready to send it to Lanson, you still had some people that did not support it. So I, I wanna be on the level playing ground, 'cause I'm not here to play games. Okay? So if we're gonna look at it, let's look at everything. 'Cause job security is something that I truly, now, when, when Councilman Davis brought that out, okay. I, I, I don't know whether people live, but what if they so happen to live in the third ward? Then security, job, and tax base is what I would, what I would, nothing against the jury pool. Okay?
I've got Councilwoman Galloway, then Davis, then Ma'am Buren, and I would.
And, and for those of you who were in the committee as a whole, please correct me if I'm wrong. 'Cause I could've very well missed, it was a lot going on. But I guess I was under the impression from the emergency manager that he hasn't even began to meet with the, um,
Bargaining.
The bargaining, um, yet. So as far as I thought, that's not really ironed out in this proposal yet already. But, but what we do know is that the jury pool is not in here at all. And I'm sure that, I, I'm concerned about families as well. But this merger is going to affect generations possibly. Which means that, um, as much as we wanna deal with the, the, the people that, you know, making sure that they're not displaced, it would just be like a charter, you know what I mean? You, you can't not revision some of the areas that need to be taken care of because there's something on the table right now. Tax base is very important. But again, and, and, and I just wanted to say this because Councilman Davis was not in the committee as a whole. And, 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 um, Councilman Mays brought up that very concern about severances. He was concerned about all of those things. And Jerry Ambrose said, that hasn't been done, we're supposed to meet with them in the next couple of days. And so if that's a part of this packet, and I just don't know it, um, and the reason why I say that is because the, the, we're adding to the packet. And if that's in there, Josh, I don't know. If, if somebody can tell me, I thought he said that it wasn't really ironed out in here. Um, I just wanna make sure, because we need to be making sure that as we're looking at this, we're looking at apples to apples, and not thinking that, okay, if you're gonna dissect this, you need to be dissecting it. That's not in here. So that can be something that if you think that that's important, can be added, because it, it wasn't in here, if it was, I didn't hear it.
And I think that what he said was, is that, um, he talked about precedents with some of the other, um, changes that were made.
Right.
And what was included in there was what was done with those other, um, units, and that they were gonna attempt to do that same thing.
Right.
Um, but he has not sat down with those bargaining units to, um, reach a formal agreement yet.
Right.
Right. So.
Call for the question.
Well, okay.
And let, I withdraw my call for the question.
Yeah, 'cause I haven't had an opportunity to.
Well, I, I, I might not, I might not have been in the committee meeting, but I do understand what I read. And it had been confirmed when I asked the attorney, was I speaking about something that was right. These people, if you got six people or seven people that works in the sixty-eight district, and they live in University Park, they're paying between twenty-eight hundred to three thousand dollars a year in taxes. They leave. That's a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and seventy thousand in ten years that is missed from our tax base. But just not speaking about them. If we got twenty people that works over there and lives in affluent area where they paying high income taxes, when they leave, it's like a domino effect. When they leave, their extended family leaves with them as well. Because they send word that it's good jobs, it's a good economic base in wherever they went, and people start following that domino, and they leave too. So when you losing ten, you losing twenty, you may lose thirty. And now you lost a lot of property and income taxes, and the city is only as strong as its income and property taxes, and most importantly, property taxes. If we constantly losing our residents, and we're talking about all this other stuff on keeping things afloat and keeping the infrastructure and everything else intact, but then you have nobody here. You gotta keep that in mind. Our biggest problem we're suffering from right now, and I think I can read, is the lack of property and income taxes. And you constantly losing residents, because we're making decisions that's constantly running them out of here. And before you know it, we losing twenty-five hundred people a year. And before you know it, we gonna be losing four and five thousand a year. We won't have, we won't have no one here, and we won't be in the condition where we can even attempt to create a tax base. That's what we have to keep in mind. We have to draw a preventive measurement somewhere and be a little more proactive. I'm only speaking about it from that point. Because a municipality or a city is only as strong as the property taxes that it receive. When they leave, their family gonna leave, their cousin's gonna leave, their uncle's gonna leave, and everybody else is gonna leave, and they all going south. Because there's better opportunity, there's better jobs in the southern area.
Thank you, Councilman. I've got Councilwoman Van Buren, and then Councilman Winfrey, and then I'm gonna wow you all with my statement. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Which one?
Ma'am Buren.
Oh. Okay, um, I'm picking up that there's two major issues involving this change. And it doesn't necessarily involve direct funding or monies in the proposal. It's more about the people themselves. It's the staffing that are now at the courts, and that the priority should be given to save as many of these positions that they will continue, not just because if they live in Flint or don't live in Flint. I think it has to do with because of their experience, and also it affects the economy of themselves and their family. We need to keep them going. We don't want to lose them just because of the change that needs to happen between, with the sixty-seventh and sixty-eighth. And then the other issue, of course, is the jury pool. To get a better clarification, a, a better, uh, understanding how that's going to affect the city of Flint. And will it be proper representation for the city of Flint? So if this was not supported now, we would have, uh, what, until April twentieth? To voice the disapproval, and then so many days, seven days after that, to have something. So we're talking by the next council meeting, the twenty-seventh? Of whatever is, comes out.
You done?
Yep, so if that's, when we get ready to vote or whatever, would you please clarify that motion so I make sure I understand that?
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes. The citizens expect us to guarantee them equality, freedom, justice, and good government. In that, it encapsulates what Councilman Davis is saying and what Councilman Mays is saying. And I don't think that looking in this thing for seven more days, I believe it is, is going to hurt. And we're not asking to change anything that's going to save the eight million or so. We're just saying for the protection of those folks who may end up in court or, and/or those folks who may have jobs, I think we can get all that done.
I'll be the last word then. I tend to agree with what Councilwoman Van Buren said. I've heard a lot of questions from everybody here tonight. And starting the clock today, I think, um, burdens us more than, um, we need to. And I think that we saw with the time limit when we were working on the firefighter's proposal, that we were coming up against this time limit that just wasn't a doable thing. So in my mind, if everybody's got questions, and I, I know I do, I know that Ward said that he was gonna research about the statute for the jury pool once the courts are consolidated, whether they can pull out for a specific, um, I forget what he called it, district or whatever. I mean, what, what is the rush to do this tonight, would be my question. Um, and why I'm voting, um, no on the motion. And frankly, I mean, you may wanna take into account, I support the plan anyways, and would probably vote no to turn it down at the end of ten days. But if, if a lot of people still have questions here, why start that seven-day clock today? Why don't we start that seven-day clock on the twentieth? That's just me. So, we are going to, um, move forward with the vote. I think that the motion on the floor is to disapprove.
Mr. President?
Let me, let me just restate the motion, and then, motion is to disapprove, um, the proposal that was presented to us by the emergency manager for district court. Is that your motion?
Yeah, and then now I'm hearing you and Ms. Van Buren say, in so many words, y'all might do it, but at a later date.
No, I, I'm telling you, I'm not doing it.
Oh, okay, so it don't matter if it's a later date for you or not?
That's why I said.
So we ready to get to work now?
That's why I said.
So I hope we got five.
Take into account that I don't support it.
I understand, I just misread what you said.
So you saying we start the clock on the twentieth?
You didn't say.
That, we've got ten days from the date it was presented, which was Friday. Ten days from then is the twentieth.
And the clock to start on the twentieth, as opposed to starting by now?
The seven-day clock, the seven-day clock. Our opportunity to respond would start on the twentieth, depending on what action we take.
And, and, and we would have to have another meeting. And I don't trust or know if that'll happen, so, you know. I believe if we start the clock today, then we should be allowed to have a meeting within the seven days. And like Ward Chapman was saying, it might only take him a day to research this, so I'm ready, you know.
Yeah, fourteen days.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have seven days from tonight if it's disapproved. You're right.
That would be bad.
We'll have to have a special meeting either way. Whether we disapprove it tonight, or whether we hold off until the twentieth, um, to get everybody's questions answered. We'll have to have a special meeting either way.
Ms. Van Buren?
Uh, what I would like to add is, I don't want to cut us off at seven days. I really would like for us to take advantage up through the twentieth.
Right.
To disapprove, because in the meantime, uh, the emergency manager said he is still going to meet with, uh, sixteen hundred and seventeen ninety-nine in a couple of days. And Ward Chapman is doing his research. So hopefully by the twentieth, we would have some information. Then we can turn it down and then have another seven days.
Mr. President?
Just a second.
Mr. President? Through you to Ms. Van Buren, I'm the maker of the motion. I don't mind a friendly amendment to set a special meeting on the nineteenth or something. I don't mind a friendly amendment.
Nineteenth is Sunday.
Well, I meet on, and, well, Sunday, we gonna get to the Lord. So, what would be the twentieth, the Monday?
Twentieth is Monday.
And since you think in that way, Ms. Van Buren, if you make a friendly amendment, I don't mind getting answers or working. I mean, what do Ms. Galloway and Mr. Winfrey and Mr. Davis think about it? I mean, I ain't tripping off of that, you know.
My, my, my. Hang on, hang on, I got Councilwoman Galloway, and then I got the next day. Councilman?
Okay.
Councilwoman Galloway?
If we deny tonight.
We have seven days from today.
Okay, so we limit ourselves to seven days instead of the full ten?
Research time.
The seven plus ten, right? Okay, so I'm just trying to make sure.
Okay.
So, okay. So we don't need to vote on it tonight?
We don't need to do anything.
Okay, so if we don't vote on it tonight, we're safer.
We're still with.
If people show back up.
Hang on, I've got Councilman Davis, and then I've got Kincaid, and then Van Buren.
But that's, but, but that's what I wanted to know. I mean, if we turn it down now, we still got time.
We've got seven days.
Seven days.
We limit ourselves.
If we turn it down now.
Tonight, you're right.
We have seven instead of fourteen.
Seven-day clock starts. But right now, we still got seven days, and then to deny it, and then another seven day.
Fourteen.
We'll give us fourteen.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I want to take Councilman Mays' suggestion and make a friendly amendment. If we could postpone this until Monday, April twentieth, to make a decision.
Five o'clock?
Now.
Five, four-thirty or four would be great.
Now let me do this. Ain't nobody gonna block that meeting, is there?
Not to my knowledge.
It wouldn't.
I don't believe, I don't believe that the emergency manager can block that meeting, because it would be responding to.
To this, yeah, I don't think so neither, so.
I don't think he would do it anyway.
We'll move forward.
All right, is there any other discussion?
I would support her amendment.
It's been moved and supported.
What time?
Five o'clock. We're gonna post, we're gonna postpone this to a special meeting on April twentieth at five o'clock. We're all in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays? He's not used to people accepting what he says. Ms. Popla?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yeah.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is nine yes, zero no, two.
Motion carries, we'll carry on with our, um, council discussion.
Was I, I would have three more minutes.
Your time was up. Uh, Councilwoman.
May I be excused, I might be back.
Motion to, oh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my discussion is a referral, um, maybe in a letter form to Congressman Kilby. In watching the news, Canada is building a underground storage facility that will contain nuclear waste. And it's gonna be right there in, uh, Lake Huron. So my question, my, um, referral to him is that, um, I support him in the bill that he's, uh, trying to, um, I guess, take to the President, uh, our President Barack Obama, and the Vice President, uh, concerning the nuclear storage facility, which would be under the water in Lake Huron. And I would like to know, in the event that the bill fails, Canada continues, because they're continuing on, they want to do this. If it is so that it is in favor of Canada to put the nuclear waste facility under Lake Huron, which they say is a mile from the shore, what will, how far would this facility be from the KWA? what will, how far would this facility be from the KWA pipeline? That's my concern. Because if we have Flint River water problems, we sure enough gonna have some big water problems if a nuclear waste storage facility leaks. And Canada is telling the United States that it won't leak what they're putting this nuclear waste in. But erosion can cause anything to leak. So I would like to please get an answer from our Congressman Kilby about this, if that's possible.
We can send that as a referral and any information they may have. But if you remember, the city council did pass a resolution that was in opposition to this move. So, yeah, we'll get with the congressman's office and see if he's got any backup.
But we didn't, we didn't find out though.
We'll get that.
How far it would be from the KW.
Right, we'll try to get that information.
Yeah, that's, that's what we need to find out, how far it would be from.
We'll send a letter.
From the pipeline. Is there something going on back there we should know about?
There might be. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Nelson?
Is my five minutes up?
No, you got a minute and 40 seconds.
Well, you just wanna rush me, Mr. President. You're not very kind tonight. But anyway, I just wanna say one thing and put it on record.
Can I interrupt you a little bit? Officer, can you come up here for a minute? Go ahead.
I thank you for the opportunity to be able to go to Germany. I learned a lot, I saw a lot. But my question today is, and you can ponder on this question. The city that I went to is roughly the size of Flint. They have three mayors, they have 40 council people that come from five different parties. And sitting and talking with some of the council people, they seem to come together because of the love of the people and the love of the city. And I sit and ponder over the city of Flint, one council, one mayor, nine council people, and basically all from the same party. And we can't seem to really do what we need to do. So let's just kinda ponder on that and see what we can do better to help our city. And one thing I think we can do is if we move "I" and "me" out of the way, and put it with "we," that might help us. So that's just my thought and opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Nothing from you, Councilman Nelson? Councilman Winfrey? Councilman Woman Van Buren?
No, thank you.
Councilman Kincaid? I've got nothing either. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
That moved and supported. We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway? She's gone. Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Popla?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman. The vote is seven yes, zero no. Thank you.